I hereby reconvene the April 8th, 2014 meeting of the Marion County School Board at 6:00 PM. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I'm requesting everyone in the audience, please turn off your cellphone or put them on vibrate. Ms. Judy Sinetti, with the Public Education Foundation, please introduce the teacher who will be providing the inspiration and leading us in the pledge this evening.
Thank you Chairman James. Good evening again, School Board members, Superintendent Tomlin. Good to see you all. I think I have the best job in the world and I get to come to you and share that with you frequently at your school board meetings. So tonight, I'm here to introduce our new Rookie Teacher of the Year for this school year, Ms. Sarah Lynn from Legacy Elementary. Sarah is in her third year teaching 4th grade. She taught 4th grade at Donellen Elementary School for two years and when Legacy opened, she moved there this year. And Mr. Crawford is familiar with her. He got to read her portfolio, interview her, and observe her teaching in the classroom. So he knows that she is an outstanding young teacher and represents all of the great teachers you have in your classrooms. And I'm pleased to introduce Sarah Lynn.
Good evening Board members, Superintendent Tomlin. I first want to express my gratitude for being invited to attend and present the pledge at this meeting. I need a step stool though, I feel. I'm honored to represent my students, my school, and my profession. As we know, teaching is not a nine-to-five job. We devote 65 or more hours every week, 36 weeks a year, and it totals more than 2,430 work hours. Then we take it home. We plan and we cram, we try to craft and we try to create, we cry, mold, and educate. Our wallets are certainly empty and our hearts are definitely full, full of memories with hopes for success, serving as our driving force for each of our students. If you look at multitasking or even an educator in the dictionary, you might find the image of a teacher calming a child, disciplining a second, listening to the story about a dog from a third, and taking attendance during the first five minutes of school. At the end of the day, or many days like these, I say a prayer to myself to give myself a boost of inspiration. I say, "Lord, let me be just what they need, exactly what they need. If they need someone to trust, let me be trustworthy. If they need sympathy, please let me sympathize. If they need love, and we know they need love, let me love in my full measure. Let me not anger easily, but let me be just. Permit me to give my justice and to be tempered. When I stand before them, let me look honest, let me look strong, and help me to counsel the anxious, crack the covering of the shy, and tame the rambunctious with a gentle attitude. Let the lessons that they learn make their lives fruitful and happy, and let me bring them to you and teach them through me to love you. And permit me to let them learn the lessons through me." Now, teaching is an act of sharing knowledge we've been bestowed upon by others with hopes that someday, in some way, it will be passed on. I pray that my students learn more than the text or the test and more than the math or the memorization, but that they learn to be a role model or a leader, a light which makes the difference in their generation. The educators who I have the pleasure of working alongside are blessings in my life and definitely blessings in their students' lives. They're setting the precedents and they're making a difference. I thank you for your unending support and on behalf of my colleagues, thank you for all that you do every day. Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, I'd like to congratulate you on being one of our outstanding teachers. I know we use the word rookie sometime, but after you spend some time in the classroom, you become a veteran quickly. So again, on behalf of the Board and all of your students, thanks for being with us. Thanks for a job well done. Give a round of applause guys. Mrs. Superintendent?
Mr. Chairman, with the exception of JD-14-82 and JD-14-85 under item SD-59, which have been withdrawn entirely from the agenda, I recommend approval of the agenda for the April 8th, 2014 School Board Meeting with the materials in the Board Packet. Those materials distributed to Board members at the meeting, the audio recording and DVD included as part of the official record of the meeting.
May I have a motion on the Superintendent's recommendation?
Some move.
Second.
It was moved by Ms. Ely, second by Mrs. Borton. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Plug me in. For some reason, I'm not. There we go. Go ahead and kick me in. Okay. Go ahead and, uh, I'm aye. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the February 20, 2014 Administrative Briefing and Work Session, the February 25th, 2014 School Board Meeting, March 4th, 2014 Administrative Briefing and Work Session, March 11th, 2014 School Board Meeting. May I have a motion and a second?
Some move.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Ely, second by Mrs. Borton. All in favor, are there any additions or corrections, I'm sorry, to the minutes? Seeing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. The motion passed, 5-0. Yes, until I can get in, get on there. For some reason, I'm not coming on. I will. The motion passed, 5-0. Ms. Mary Needham, Coordinator of Library and Media Service, and the Arts, please come forward and introduce the individuals you have with you. I understand you have a video to show us in honor of the School Library Month.
We do, we do. Thank you, Mr. James, and good evening to all of you. I do have some school librarians with me that I'd like for them to come up and I'll introduce them to you. We've got Terry Robinson. Terry is an elementary school librarian at Maplewood and Bellevue-Santos. Daniella Drayson is our middle school librarian at Horizon. Joan Lorenko is a high school librarian at Donellen High School, and Belinda Vose is at North Marion Middle School. This month, April, is School Library Month, and School Library Month is an American Association of School Librarians celebration of school librarians and their programs. And every April, school librarians are encouraged to create activities to help their school and local communities celebrate the essential role that strong school library programs play in the lives of their students. Our school librarians do this every day, not just during the month of April, creating the activities, events, helping them to become lifelong readers and learners, getting them to just basically love reading. The 2014 theme is Lives Change at Your Library, and we have a short film showing how school librarians in Marion County schools touch and change the lives of their students. So, Mr. Bill, if you will get that going for us. We'd like to thank you so much for your support of school libraries and our school library programs in Marion County, and we'd like to thank you for having us here tonight in recognition of School Library Month.
Ms. Needham, I just wanted to thank all of you all for being the heartbeat of our schools, and hopefully we'll be able to reinstate one media specialist per school in the near future. We need it, and I know how much you're needed at your school, so thank you for everything you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. May I have a motion to adopt a proclamation, recognize April as Autism Awareness Month? May I have a motion and a second? Mr. Crawford has given the motion. Ms. Borton has seconded. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion passed, 5-0. Mr. Kevin Christian, Public Relations Officer and TV Media Coordinator, and Ms. Amy Piparato, Exceptional Student Education Program Specialist, please come forward for the reading and the presentation of the proclamation.
I think a lot of folks just call her Ms. Amy.
Ms. Amy. I'll remember that, Ms. Amy.
This proclamation reads, "Whereas autism is a complex developmental disability typically appearing during the first three years of life, and it is estimated to occur in one out of every 88 children, and is four times more prevalent in boys than girls, but knows no racial, ethnic, or social boundaries. Whereas autism affects the normal development of the brain in the areas of reasoning, social interaction, and communication skills, and children and adults with autism typically have difficulties in verbal and nonverbal communication, social interaction, and leisure activities. Whereas autism has wide-ranging implications for the entire family of the diagnosed individual, and early diagnosis, research, training, education, and therapy are all vital to reducing the negative effects of autism. Whereas significant progress has been made in the last 30 years in the areas of research, medication, diagnosis, and therapies for autism, resulting in an improved quality of life for individuals living with autism and for their families. Whereas autism is a complex disability requiring research to find a cure and prevention, as well as increased recognition and understanding to ensure individuals with autism are accurately diagnosed and appropriately treated throughout their lives. Autism is the fastest-growing developmental disorder, yet most underfunded. And whereas it is in our interest as a school district and community to recognize achievements in this field and continue these efforts by promoting the awareness and fostering the understanding of autism, now therefore be it resolved that the Marion County School Board and Superintendent of Schools hereby proclaim the month of April as Autism Awareness Month in Marion County to increase awareness and compassion in our community." And each of you has signed and dated this proclamation, so Ms. Amy, on behalf of the Board and Superintendent, I'll present this to you, and you're welcome to make some comments.
It's a great honor to accept this proclamation on behalf of all of our students with autism, their families, as well as the teachers and support staff who work diligently to improve their quality of life. At this time, I would also like to just make a comment that, as this proclamation stated, that this is one of the fastest-growing developmental disabilities. Since this proclamation was accepted and signed by all of you, the CDC has come out with a statement stating that it's now one in 68 children. Thank you.
Thank you. And it's always a special moment when we recognize what we do with our kids that are, when I say special, they are indeed special. So that's one of these things I'd just like to say, this is the month where we need to recognize those youngsters as well. Mr. Kevin Christian and Mr. Charles Fleming, representing the Marion County National Day of Prayer Task Force, please come forward for the reading of a presentation and proclamation. Oh, may I, let me back it up for a minute. May I have a motion to adopt a proclamation and knowledge in May 1st, 2014 as National Day of Prayer? May I have a motion?
Some move.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Crawford, second by Mrs. Ely. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion passed, 5-0. Mr. Christian, it's your turn now.
Mr. Fleming, good to see you. This proclamation reads, "Whereas the Congress of the United States passed a law proclaiming the first Thursday of each May as the National Day of Prayer, whereas May 1st, 2014 is the day set aside for Americans of all denominations to unite to pray for our people, our leaders, and nations. Whereas the 63rd consecutive observance of the National Day of Prayer recognizes the freedom to gather, worship, and pray, and whereas this year we are united in our prayers for the safe return of our extended family members serving in our military overseas. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Marion County School Board acknowledges May 1st, 2014 as the National Day of Prayer and joins all citizens of Marion County, the state, and the nation in observing this important occasion." And of course, this is signed and dated by each of you, so Mr. Fleming, on behalf of the Board, I'd like to present this to you. You're welcome to make comments.
This is the 24th consecutive Marion County National Day of Prayer, and so I thank you for your efforts.
Thank you. Board, okay. Thank you so much for being here with us. May I have a motion to adopt the revised Board Policy 2.15, Bullying and Arrestment? May I have a second?
Some move.
I'm sorry, may I have a motion and a second?
Some move.
Second.
Okay. It was moved by Mrs. Borton, second by Mr. Crawford. Mr. Superintendent?
Mr. Chairman, the Board Policy has been revised for compliance with changes made to Florida Statute 1006.147, School Environmental Safety Incident Report, and Department of Education's Model Policy.
I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wish to address the revised Board Policy? Seeing none, Board, do we have any discussion? May I have a vote? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The motion passed, 5-0. May I have a motion to adopt the revised Board Policy 5.15, The Homeless Children? May I have a motion and a second?
Second.
It was moved by Mr. Crawford and second by Mrs. Ely. Mrs. Superintendent?
Mr. Chairman, the Board Policy has been revised to comply with the updates to statutes, the McKinney-Vento Homeless Assistance Act, and the No Child Left Behind Act 2001.
I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wish to address the revised Board Policy?
I have no speakers.
Seeing none. Any discussion?
I just want to, I believe I said this before, but so many children are considered homeless in Marion County, not just because they don't have a home of their own, but if they're living with their grandparents, or they're living with a friend. And we have many, many children in all of our schools who are deemed homeless, so I appreciate all that Marion County is doing to help these kids, get them clothed, get them fed, and take care of them on weekends with the Backpack Program.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Seeing none, I'll call a question. All in favors, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of the following items which have been placed on the regular agenda for discussion, C-13, C-15, C-16, C-17, C-18, C-19, and C-20. May I have a motion?
Some move.
Second.
And a second. It was, the motion was by Ms. Ely, and it was second, um...
I second.
The motion was by Ms. Borton, second by Ms. Ely. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passed, 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the outside council agreement with Susan Seigler, Dell Graham, PA, so that specialized and legal services will be available regarding the Francis Marion Military Academy litigation? May I have a motion and a second?
Some move.
Second.
It was moved by Mrs. Borton and second by Mrs. Ely. Ms. Stacy, you withdrew this item for discussion?
Yes, and it's just for a light discussion. I understand that, after speaking with Francis Marion, that there has already been some work done by Mrs. Seigle regarding a motion to dismiss. I don't know if that's so or not, and I was asking Mrs. Morris if that's already taken place.
She had a certain number of days in which to respond.
Okay.
By mutual agreement with Francis Marion, should the Attorney General refuse to render an opinion, then once Louis Dinkins received notice that she was unwilling to render an opinion, he then contacted her to let her know that. And according to our agreement, she then had, I don't remember, 35 or 40 days in which to file a response.
Okay.
And so she had to do that before she could get to this board meeting.
Right. I wanted to discuss it with you here because I didn't want to run up our tab anymore, discuss it with you on the phone. I was just curious as to why we went ahead and did that. And I would hope that we hold that down as much as possible as far as any further actions. I mean, if we filed to dismiss and kind of wait to see what they're going to do, I assume that's what she's going to do to keep the cost down. But I felt like since you were here anyway, I could have a conversation with you tonight about it instead of calling you on the phone and running up the clock. Thank you.
Any additional discussion? Call the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion passed, 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the 2014-2015 Staffing Plan? May I have a motion and a second?
Some move.
Some move by Ms. Borton?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Ely. Are there any discussion?
I'd like to have a little bit of discussion on it. I've been doing a little bit of checking around on some things, and I know this is just kind of premature. This is just while we're talking about the staffing plan, and we're staffing our teachers and that sort of thing now. But, and when we start calculating our budget and everything, I found out that thanks to Mr. Langford, he did some research for me since last Thursday. I've received some emails from him today and yesterday, I guess, that the psychologists in some districts are only on a 220-day contract where ours have been on a 260-day, although he did share, and I believe he sent it to all the Board members, that all of our new hires will be on a 220-day contract, and that we will gradually, I guess, work towards that as our eventual end. So I sent an email back to Mr. Langford and requested information from him as to how many, we have 16 psychologists on right now. All the five new ones are planning on being hired on a 220-day contract, but we only have two of the current 16 that are on a 220-day contract, so we have 14 to go. I am just curious, what is it that we're waiting for to put all psychologists on a 220-day contract? If that's what we feel we need, and Mr. Langford, that was what you shared with me in your email, that that is the intention to go to that, what are we waiting for? We had no problem, you know, letting teachers, you know, be fired and then come back for their jobs if they wanted their job. And of course, we also looked at the dollar figure in Lake County, and they're like, they're being paid, essentially their start-out salary is like 40% less than we start out a psychologist for. I just, you know, when I look at districts that were able to meet class size and meet their budgets, they're basically the same size of ours, I started looking, okay, let me just look at an area. And I just went, and it hit that one at our workshop meeting last week. And you were great to promptly get me the information I had requested. Is this something that possibly we could look at as we are trimming our budget? Because we will have to do that to find this $20 million that we just added with our employees, or, you know, then putting the staffing plan back together. What is our plan with that?
Typically, when we change a contract, we have to do it as we get new people in, regardless of a psychologist or cafeteria workers or teachers. We would have to go to the union with a contract in place, and so they maintain their 260-day status. As they leave and they are replaced, then we can put the new contract into place for them.
Which union did the psychologists belong to?
I'm not sure, Mark. Are they represented by, no, they're not represented per se.
Okay, thank you.
If I could address, we actually do need some psychologists to work during the summer months. We have a lot of, and I believe that Mr. Vanello and Mr. Lane that are here in the room can verify that also. It is a year-long process. However, we believe that those that are employed for the 12-month time can carry that load during the summer, but our new recommendations, our new hires will be for the reduced rate of pay.
Okay, but I understood from Mr. Langford that that was our plan to gradually go in that direction to the 220-day. So if we can gradually go in that direction over the next couple of years, I don't know why we can't go ahead and just go in that direction and, you know, look at possibly the salary and that sort of thing. Because I shared with y'all last year about the same time that I had checked with the centers, looking at psychology salaries over there, you know, and they were pretty much in line, now that I know what Lake County is paying, they were pretty much in line with what they were paying. We just have, you know, very... We just have, you know, very well-paid positions at that and possibly because it, some of them are a two hundred and sixty day contract, and that does make a difference. Are we bringing in the new psychologists on the two hundred and twenty day contract on that same starting salary or have we adjusted the salary for the two hundred and twenty days?
Oh, it will be adjusted for the, for the two hundred and twenty day, the per day rate. So a two hundred and twenty day psychologist will be making less than a two hundred and sixty day psychologist.
But I'm, okay, but the two, two hundred and twenty day psychologists that we already have on staff, they're not, they're making less than the beginning salary for the psychologist?
That is correct. That is correct. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Couple of other issues there to point out to you that there is a difference in certification requirements for what our psychologists do and what other agencies may have their psychologists also perform. So to, to compare salaries is one thing, but we also need to compare duties and certification. And I am not prepared to, to share that.
Right.
The second, the second point of this also, and you pointed this out well in your opening comments, Miss Stacy, this is a staffing plan. Staffing plan leads to budget. And then we are, certainly could make a recommendation that different personnel have fewer days in order to make, make a balanced budget, which you must be approving of by the time we get to that point.
Yes, I think I did jump the gun going on to that. I agree with you. But I was just curious as far as, and I am fully aware of the certifications, but I think our probably psychologists would require the same certifications that Lake County psychologists have, I would think, that would be very similar.
I'm going to refer to Mark Vanello and Matt Lane, similar type certifications, which is different than, than the.
Than the centers would have, right.
Yes, ma'am.
So I'm comparing us to Lake now.
Yes, ma'am.
Another thing on the staffing plan that I would like for this board to entertain. Last year, because it affects the staffing of our number of teachers, last year I came before the board and, you know, I made some, I shared that we had some new legislation centered around school choice and the ability to determine class size, you know, our class size, meeting class size, basically by the school average versus the classroom average. And we talked about that. And I brought it up several times, and I think, Mr. Crawford, you might remember, we discussed it. Somewhere along the way, well, the staffing plan happened and I was totally ignored and basically I was told you can't do it. And that's interesting because I was told you can't do it, but thirteen districts in the state have gone to full school choice and they have saved money. And Mr. Tomlin, I have the names of them if you'd like them. I have them written down right here. Calhoun, Clay, Coria, Dixie, Flagler, Gulf, Holmes, Lafayette, Levy, Monroe, Ochobee, Pasco, and Walton. And they've gone to open enrollment type, controlled open enrollment, school choice, where the parents apparently, from what I'm finding out, are paying for their transportation if they choose to go to a different school outside where they're slated to go. I spoke to the Department of Education and that's how I received my information. So last year I was told can't be done. This year I'm telling you thirteen other districts did it. Had we done it last year, it probably would have meant that we needed anywhere from probably sixty to a hundred and twenty teachers less than we had, which is three to five million dollars difference in our budget. But, so I'm bringing it up this year again as a possibility, as a way to affect our staffing plan where we might not need to hire as many teachers. And if we don't hire as many teachers, maybe we can be, you know, extra good to the teachers that we do hire. But.
Well, and I'm proud to tell you that, that Mr. Burke, who's in charge of our student assignments, is looking into that. There are nine criteria that allows a district.
And I have them written down.
Yes, I think we probably, I'm sure we have the same criteria. So he's looking into that. He's, he's inquiring with the, the state as to the procedures involved, and we're looking closely into that to see if we can take advantage of that opportunity.
Well, I'm glad he came to the party. I was there last year. I had all the information last year, all these same criteria as I shared last year, and they're not any different. Okay, but that's what, a couple of the things I just wanted to talk about on the staffing plan, you know, as far as, especially on the teacher issue, looking into the school choice options, on how to better spend our dollars besides paying penalty.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Martin?
Mr. Langford, with this current staffing plan, are we trying to meet class size with that? And if so, how many extra teachers will it cover? And, you know, what that, the budget would be of this?
The, yes, the staffing plan that's being presented tonight, which we talked about in the workshop, does cover for class size, does, does make allowances for class size. There's an additional, about a hundred and ninety-three additional units that would help to cover the class size. The difference in cost, of course, depends on average calls versus brand-new teachers versus veteran teachers and so forth. But we can figure somewhere in the, let's say, eight million dollar range that that would, that would be at least a starting point when you consider additional costs for these additional units.
Thank you, Mrs. Boynton. That was a very good question, and it leads me to my next comment. If we need a hundred and ninety teachers and if we do the open, if we endorse school choice and open enrollment, possibly we would even need maybe sixty to a hundred less teachers, which would actually save us three to five million dollars over your eight million dollar estimate.
Absolutely. And as we start that budget.
Therefore, to continue the conversation, why? This is a definite viable option, and it was also an option last year.
Well, and that's why we're looking at that. And that's why, remember that if you approve this tonight, that doesn't mean that we are locked into it until the fall. Last year, if you recall, we came back with amended staffing plans as we worked through the budget situation, and we are certainly. That, that's a possibility this year as we continue working in the budget also.
Okay, I think we'll get there.
Okay, any additional discussion? Ms. Crawford?
I want to get back to the, excuse me, the issue on the, was it psychologists? Was it? And you said that right now we've got them on two hundred and sixty day contracts. We're bringing the new ones on there at two twenty. How many psychologists do we actually have during the, the summer?
Fourteen.
Well, there are sixteen right now.
Right.
Two of those are on the two hundred and twenty day, so we'll have fourteen of the psychologists that will be continuing to work twelve-month, two hundred and sixty day calendars.
But Lake County has none.
What, what do they do during the summer?
There's a tremendous amount of paperwork and follow-up that has to be done. If you recall, when we talked about the staffing plan, we talked about we've actually hired some additional units because the, the process for evaluations, for identifications, those kinds of things have deadlines, and so a lot of that is caught up during the summertime when they are not out at the schools, talking to particular students and doing those, those aspects of the job. We, we are attempting to, to change that to two hundred and twenty days because we think we can continue to meet the needs of the, of the entire department on a two hundred and twenty day contract instead of that two hundred and sixty day that, that has been in place for a while. The Leesburg, I know, Miss Stacy, I, I send it to her. I know I copied the board on some of those emails. They're on a, a much shorter timetable, and they are under a real crunch, and their administration is very concerned about the same thing we are, and that's getting all that paperwork done and meeting the needs of the kids and the funding and, and all those sort of things.
But all these contracts are renewing this year, because, I mean, these are one-year contracts. Why would we not go to two twenty on all those contracts at this point and then review the necessity of having, you know, additional time allocated to individual psychologists to finish up some paperwork and, and do a separate short-term contract to handle that?
And I, I think that is a possibility. Matt Lane, who's in charge of our psychologists, may have more information.
Sure. I, I appreciate the chance to come up and address some of your specific questions. The, as Mr. Tomlin said earlier, there is a need, that's why I was kind of hoping you'd ask me to come up. There is a need over the summer as well. A few statistics for you. And during the months of March, April, and May, we get two-thirds of our referrals come into our office during those months. So after, teachers have worked all year long with kids implementing interventions and working with them, trying their best to help struggling kids, it comes to this time of the year when they're making some decisions and they say, we think this child has a learning disability, we think this child has some other kind of disability, they submit the referral. What our parents do not need is for us to drop the ball then. When, when all that has happened and we get all these referrals, last year in two thousand and thirteen, as of June twelfth, we had five hundred seventy-four referrals sitting in our office. And those, that's the work we do over the summer. It's not just paperwork. We have kids coming in, we set appointments out at the schools, we have appointments in our office, and so we're seeing kids and we're doing those evaluations so that our parents then can be reassured that these students have been evaluated and come August, they're not going, well, we referred this child back in May and why aren't we ready to have a placement ready? And so it's, it's real important that we have some folks on staff over the summer so that we can make sure that these kids with disabilities are identified. We have a new timeline as of July for pre-K students. Right now, we have a waiting list. If you have a, a grandchild who's four years old and you suspect they're delayed and you want them evaluated by us, they won't get on the list as of right now until June because we have a waiting list. Now, the state is saying as of July first, we can't do that anymore. So Mrs. Dobbins and I are working on a plan right now to be prepared to test about sixty students this summer who are little four-year-olds so that come August, again, we'll have a placement for those kids. On top of that, we have our sixty-day timeline to make sure that we get all evaluations done in a timely fashion. We also have our developmentally delayed students who have to be reevaluated prior to their sixth birthday. A good number of those come in, in the springtime as well. And so we have to, by, by the state board rule, get those done prior to their sixth birthday. It's just, it's a lot of work. And over the last, I don't, I don't have the statistics with me, but as we've added schools over the last many years, we haven't added any psychologists. So it's this point now, I never come to you guys. I never, you have to look at your records. I never come to you and ask for additional staff. I haven't. We are at a point now where we have to have this additional staff if we're going to meet these mandates and do what's right by the way of our parents and our students who are struggling and potential disabled students.
Miss Stacy and then Miss Boynton?
You know, I understand all of that, but Mr. Langford shared with me that we are working towards two twenty day contracts. And I feel like the only reason we're not moving on towards that, I see no problem. I mean, Lake County has none in the summer, which probably is not an ideal situation. I agree that we could use some, but I just don't, you're going to have a hard time convincing me that we need all fourteen that's on two hundred and sixty day contract all the way through the summer. I could see have, if Lake County does the same number of students basically with us, with none, you know, then I think we could, and in all fairness, they do have two more psychologists on staff than we have. They have eighteen, we have sixteen.
Right.
And so I actually did the math. If we took away, if we took all of ours and put them on two hundred and twenty day contract, basically we would have eighteen, you know, we would kind of be in that same spot. But, but yet we're putting on five more. And so we still, I believe, we're staffed heavy there. In an ideal world, in an ideal world, we would have music and art teachers. And I would, I have a problem with us addressing our psychology issues when we don't have librarians and we don't have art and music teachers and, and our teachers are teaching their own P.E. classes and that sort of thing. I think everybody has to get in on this, on this, but possibly could even rotate. I don't know. I'm just saying that there's, and you said you haven't come to us for extra staff. Well, we haven't increased our student numbers by very much either. So I can, I mean, if we had jumped our student numbers up, I could say, yay, yay, thanks for not coming to us for extra staff, but our student numbers really haven't increased. So therefore, I didn't really see that there would be justification for anyone coming to us for new staff. So I, you know, I can appreciate the fact that you haven't, but our student numbers haven't increased either. So therefore, that's remained kind of similar.
Every new, every new school that we add is a new school that someone serves. And so that's a whole set of staff members and teachers and students that we go to on a, on a scheduled day.
Right, but they've just been shifted from another school where they were, and now they're there and not there because we're just playing musical chairs with the same kids.
Yeah.
But.
I would just, just maintain that there, there are, at this time last year, five hundred seventy-four parents out there of disabled students that might say it's important to get these evaluations done.
And I, and I believe we will, and I believe there's just that same many disabled students up in Lake County, but I don't like sacred cows in this district. We need teachers in the classroom, we need music and art teachers in the classroom, and we don't need to start saving sacred cows. I think we need to look at all areas, and that's my position.
Ms. Boynton?
Okay, thank you.
Just stay where you are for a minute.
Thank you, Miss Stacy and Mr. Crawford for bringing this up. One of the things I wanted to, to bring to our attention is, we do have parents that are complaining that with the gift that I had a parent kindergarten and that they did not get the results of that test until one year later, displacing the child, you know, one year later. So I think that this would be good for us to have additional psychology on staff so that that sixty-day time limit can be, that timeline can be met and parents can be made a, be addressed of what's going on in their, their child's evaluation, whether it's for a gifted program or E.S.C. testing evaluation. So I want to thank you for bringing that up to us and just want the board to be aware that we do have parents that have made some viable complaints about them not getting the results back in, in time for them to place their child.
We have a lot of complaints.
Let me, just, let me just step in. Ms. Ely?
I, I've heard that too. And I know, didn't you say, Ms. Lane, that the, the pre-K, it's the law that they have to be tested, those D.D. children?
Right.
By, by what is the deadline for that?
Well, two, two things. The, the initial pre-K assessment has to be scheduled within twenty days of the parent making the request.
Okay.
So we can't have a waiting list for that. And also, then, once they're in, they have to be reevaluated prior to their sixth birthday.
And didn't Ms. Dobbins say at the last meeting that we're losing some funding because we're not getting these kids tested?
Right, a hundred and seventeen students that we didn't get under that timeline.
Thank you.
One of the things I, I just want to, want to just share with the board, when we look in other people's pot, let's make sure we look all the way down to the bottom. When I say that now, I know we, we, Lake County, but I know there's some lawsuits and things going over in Lake County in reference to them not doing things in a timely manner. And for the people that have not had the opportunity to sit in on staffings or be a part of staffings, those things are not where you go in there for fifteen minutes and come out. These things require a lot of time. It require a lot of input, and it require a lot of people getting together. And if one person is out of place, then we have to start the process all over. I think I ran into a little bit of that today. And when I look at what we're talking about, we are talking about kids where we're not talking about a seventh-period day. We're talking about kids that need an individual education plan and it need to be thorough. I recognize the fact that we have a lot of needs in our school district, but I will tell you this, if a kid is not properly placed, we have lost a youngster. And we need to make sure that the kids that have special needs are not short-changed because we are looking at our dollars and cents. Because I will tell you that no child is a child that we should not have in a proper setting. And this is what I find that, over the years, the time that I have worked with people in staffing, is that they can get people together during the summer and pull these people together, and when those kids come in, they're properly placed. I know that we have a progression plan. Some kids are in different settings, and when we start looking at alternative setting for them, we need to be very careful when we start, start talking about our, our psychology department and what we're doing with our students. I, I want to commend these guys because I know how difficult it is to work with at-risk youngsters, and they are at risk. And we just did something in reference to autism and things like that. And when we say this, we also have gifted in there. There's a lot going on here, and they need a, if I had anything to say, they would need a lot more attention than, quote, the normal counselor per se. So when I look at what we're talking about, guys, I'm not in favor of cutting our staffing, uh, uh, our psychology department at all because I know how difficult it is to work with one kid that have a special learning, a disability, a special need. Mrs. Superintendent, do you have anything you want to share?
No, sir, don't. I think the position's been well represented by Mr. Lane and Mr. Langford.
I agree with you, Mr. James. What I'm trying to point out is that we also have teachers that are in the classroom with three and four of those very children with those E.S.C. issues now that we have, you know, we have all the kids in a classroom now. We don't have, we, what do you call it? Everybody's in the room, Ms. Ely? And we have mainstream, and so.
Resource.
So I think that the teachers, you know, you, they're, it's important that we get them evaluated, but it's also important that the teacher also gets some help and that we don't do without teacher's assistance or not meeting class size so that we can fund psychologists because it's great that you get them staffed, but if the teacher is literally pulling students off the ceiling because. because she's got four students that she can't handle in her classroom because she's got too many kids, I have to think of the teacher also. But I do feel your pain also.
Okay, and I don't want to mix apples and oranges, because when we talk in terms of properly placing youngsters, that's the most important thing. If a kid comes to school, works hard, and behaves, and if he's not properly placed, he's got a wasted year. Mr. Crawford.
Yeah, Ms. Stacy, you have to remember, unfortunately, in the case of the department Mr. Lane is operating, is there are all these federal, and now even the state has joined in, statutes that say that you have to do this stuff. We can thank a former U.S. Senator named Jim Jeffers, who really kind of got this going many, many years ago. So, they're operating under those requirements. And, you know, parents literally can sue us if we don't do the evaluations on particular timetables and...
Timelines.
Like that, versus, you know, you know, what you were addressing about maybe more support for people in the classroom or whatever it is. And I'm not suggesting that we need to cut. What I'm trying to figure out is there, is there a better, more efficient way that we can deliver this service? And, you know, maybe by putting everybody on one, you know, all these employees on one, on one track, and then look at the needs that we have past those number of days and see how many personnel that we're going to need instead of, do we actually always need the fourteen? Or, I mean, could, and I'm just pulling a number out of the air, could five of them clean up the paperwork?
Five was exactly...
Or whatever it takes, or maybe that five be the ones that do the initial? And I think Mr. Lane said, and I did not write it down, how many did you say were coming up during the summer, you thought?
This was a year ago.
Right.
Stats, five-hundred-seventy-four.
No, no, that's during the summer?
Right.
Okay. You know, maybe, and I don't know how long it takes to evaluate a child. Can you maybe enlighten us on that?
Sure. From the whole piece, testing, review of records, usually involves a meeting with the parent, report writing, takes anywhere from four to eight hours per student.
Okay, so basically, let's say you would be, take the outside, one day a week. So, a psychologist could handle five a week. If we got lucky, maybe ten, but it'd be somewhere between five and ten, okay? And so, you know, let's do some numbers on that and see if there's some better way we can deliver the service. Because, one, I think, I agree with Mr. James. I think we need to, if these children have this need, we need to, we need to address it. And also, the fact it keeps us out of potential litigation, because they do have the right to. If they don't get the services that have been mandated by statute or law, we fall into a problem.
Ms. Stacy.
And that's exactly right. And what made me bring this up was that Mr. Langford shared with me that our goal is to go to two-twenty. So, what will we do when we go to two-twenty? We'll go to jail?
Okay, and again, one of the things, it's always nice for us to think in terms of saving some money, but I really would like for y'all to look at what we're doing with these youngsters. I will, at this time, when I say that, I'm just saying, make sure we know what we're doing. And if there's no more discussion, I'd like to call the question over.
I will call the question.
Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion passed, five-zero. May I have a motion to approve the template of agreement for private instructional personnel to provide service on a school property and allow the executive director of student service to approve on behalf of the school board? May I have a motion and a second?
Send it.
It was moved by Mr. Crawford and second by Mrs. Ely. Ms. Stacy, you withdrew this item for discussion.
Okay, so that's number, the first one. Yes. I wanted to thank Mrs. Morris for taking this. And Mr. Callahan, this was about the little article that you wrote up about my concerns over the parents not being treated the same as independent contractors. They have completely renovated the entire contract. And I want to thank Mrs. Morris. She worked with me greatly, and she put in almost all of my language, which was a lot. And what I particularly liked was where we added, whereas the school board of Marion County welcomes the opportunity to collaborate with private instructional personnel who are serving our students. We started out in a welcoming way and not a combative way. And the entire policy goes on like that. And I also, you know, we made it a very, it's a great template, Mrs. Morris, that we've put together. And when I spoke with Mr. Vianello earlier, when I shared with him I was pulling this earlier today, my, and I shared with him that I just had a few contract concerns actually on all of these items, and it's all the same discussion on all of the items that I pulled, it's all the same thing. Mrs. Morris, we have in the parent contract on page three, 10A under general liability. I guess it would be sub-paragraph one I, and then the second one, double I, where there shall be no exclusions for contractual contracted liability. And then it says, "The coverage may not include restrictive endorsements, which exclude coverage for liability arising out of sexual molestation, sexual abuse, or sexual misconduct." We found it necessary to put that in the parent contract, but it's not in any of the other contracts that I pulled on this entire, all the independent, you know, the independent ones and that sort of thing. On the other items that I pulled off the agenda, that language is not there. And I feel like, just to keep some consistency, that I would like the board to consider having all contracts be consistent, not just the parent contract speaking about those things. But I don't believe that any of our contracts should be allowed to exclude any of those things. And I know that risk management looks at some of the contracts, but if they missed something, it comes back on the board. If there was some type of an exclusion, it comes back on the board. And if the board doesn't feel the same way that I feel that all contracts should include that, because I appreciate Mrs. Morris putting it in this contract, we have a great template, then I want the public record to show that I asked for this to be in there, so if we do have a problem down the road, I can say, "I shared with them my concerns." But even on the independent contract, that last one, the C, Ms. Blockhead, I'm not sure which one it is, Ms. Ely, do you know?
C-twenty.
The C-twenty that was like the independent, the independent contract agreements with agencies of speech therapists to provide speech therapy and all of those. That's basically what the parent contract was also going to cover, is the same thing that the parents hire. That contract, if you look at Exhibit B, doesn't even, it just says general liability policy. It doesn't even talk about anything that's required. And so, you know, I feel like the contract, if it's good enough for the parents, it's good for the parents contractor. I feel like it's good enough for all of the other independent contractors that we do work with, because basically, they're out of the same pool. If the parents hired an independent contractor, it's going to come from the same pool. And so, I would like the language to look the same, because I'm not complaining that it's there, Mrs. Morris. I like it being there. I like it saying, you know, "Coverage for liability," nothing can be excluded for these, for sexual molestation and abuse and misconduct. But I believe all of our contracts should say that, if one does. I believe we should be consistent across the board. And possibly, it doesn't, because these things have all happened gradually, Mrs. Morris, over the years, you know, where, you know, it's happened and then, and maybe it's time for us to, I mean, we've gone through, looked at all of our job descriptions. Maybe it's time to look and get some consistency on all of our contracts, where our contracts read the same, to make it easy for risk management. But that's my concern.
And I can add, say...
Ms. Borington.
On line twelve, if we go to, I guess it's the head, the one with Head Start? Line twelve, I'm thinking that the chart, the Exhibit A, Nancy?
Exhibit B. It's on, if you go to the independent contractor and you click on it and you go to Exhibit, I think it was Exhibit B, I'm not sure. Because I was looking at it earlier today.
Where has, has it written out the general professional sexual abuse and molestation workers comp added on Exhibit A? You want it written in?
Well, however it's written, you know, just, let's keep everything consistent. And if it's, if it's there on Exhibit A, let's add it to the parent contract. And add, there's no exclusions on any of the contracts, to make them all look the same.
Okay, now, what I'm hearing is C-five have this information in there. Is that correct?
C-fifteen.
C-fifteen.
Let me suggest something.
Okay.
Ms. Stacy, if you want a thoughtful response from me, or I would guess from staff members, and the response to address your specific concern, I need to have adequate time to do that. And most important, I need to know what your concern is. And if you could let me know well in advance of a meeting that this is an aspect that you like in this one contract, and you want to know why it was not in others, I'm sure that I could have gone through the twenty contracts and told you. You probably wouldn't have even had to spend more time talking about it. I could have given you that answer. But when I don't hear until four o'clock that you're pulling all Mr. Vianello's contracts, and I still had no idea why you were pulling them, what consistency you were looking for.
Well, that's okay. It's not a problem, you know. I'm just saying, from, I would just like for us to consider...
Well, I just don't feel we can have a productive conversation with you and the board. And it could have been very productive if I could have brought you that information from the other contracts. This is a collection of very different kinds of contracts, as you noticed when you read through them.
And I don't, I do not have even a problem approving these for tonight. And then next year, we address it. I don't have a problem with that at all. My position is that we do have all of these issues. And I'm very conscientious about, you know, taking up the taxpayers' time. I really don't expect you really to go through all these contracts and fix them. I'm prepared to vote for these contracts tonight. But I would like the board, when we do this again, because I don't like to pay for attorney fees to do things twice and to go back and add language in. But I would like the schools, but I would like Mr. Vianello and everyone to know that I do have a concern, that the contracts are not consistent. And that when we do this on the next batch of contracts, that we fix this problem.
But I'm saying there may be reasons for these inconsistencies.
Well, I don't see how there could be a reason to, for anyone to restrict endorsements which coverage liability for sexual molestation, sexual abuse, and sexual misconduct. I don't really see that where there could be any good reason. Maybe, maybe so, but I can't see it. But this is something that we can, I'm prepared to vote for tonight. I mean, I love the way the parent contract ended up. I would, I think it's a great template for us possibly to follow in the future. And there was no reason for me to call and discuss it, because that just runs the clock up, and I have you here, I can talk to you here. And I'm prepared to vote for this. I would just like the board to think about our contracts being more consistent in the future. And I can see how these have probably evolved over time. But no one has just thought, "Well, hey, we didn't have a template like this until you fixed this one for us." And so, now that we have this one, and we've talked a lot about it, and you've done a great job, I would just like, in the future, for us to carry that same template forward with the other contractors, that's all. But I'm prepared to vote for this tonight.
And I want to thank you for that. But the one thing I think we need to make sure we understand, what I heard from, from Ms. Morris, if we had additional time with this, and at four o'clock, I think that may have been one of the issues where you felt not prepared to present this to her. And it would give all of the board members a chance to chime in on what we, what is being pulled. And one of the things I had said...
No one ever pulls anything but me.
May I finish, please? One of the things that I find so interesting about what we're trying to do here today is that, at this point, I've said we were transitioning into things, and it should be a board. And if we have an opportunity, and again, at four o'clock, I know we had people walking out of office trying to get here. We didn't have a chance to really know what the issues are. And again, it's important that we work together as a team. And this is what I'm saying, and I appreciate you, again, pointing out you were at a disadvantage because of lack of time in terms of preparation. If there's no more discussion, I'll call the...
No, I have some comment. Mr. James, our teachers, when the students take the FCAT exam, they don't get a second chance to go back. They have to prepare those students to pass the FCAT exam. When things are put on our board agenda, on the consent agenda, that's just going to skate through, I would think that our staff would be as prepared, putting it on there, as our students have to be when they take FCAT, because they don't get a second chance. No one comes behind them and says, "Oops, you got the wrong answer there." So, therefore, I would expect the same out of the adults in our school system as we expect out of the children. When something comes on this board packet, it should be ready. A board member should not have to go back and, and say, "This is the way this should be or that should be," because I feel like that's just common knowledge. And so, as far as pulling it at four o'clock, I spoke with Mr. Vianello. No one had to be pulled in here, Mr. James. That's just not correct, because I spoke with Mr. Vianello, and I shared with him this was just a question I had with Mrs. Morris. So, that's totally not correct.
Thank you. One of the things I just wanted to share with you, all of us participate in discussions, and when things are pulled, whether it's the attorney or whatever, we'd like to be informed of it, not just Mr. Vianello. But it'd help us in terms of having a very intelligent conversation, because we do have an opportunity, we will have an opportunity to say, "Hey, this is what this is about." And I have no problem with that. At this point, I will call the question on C-15. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 I can't get... Just do it, just vote like the other.
And would you like for me to vote?
With everybody else? I've got it. There. Not my computer.
The motion passed, five-zero. May I have a motion to approve the agreement with the Honored House, Inc. for counseling? May I have a motion and a second?
Send it.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Crawford, second by Mrs. Borington. Ms. Stacy, you put with you this item.
Call the question.
Call the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion passed, five-zero. May I have a motion to approve the agreement with Childhood Development Service, Inc. for Head Start program? May I have a motion and a second?
Send it.
Second.
It was moved by Ms. Borington, second by Mrs. Ely. Are there any discussion? Ms. Stacy, you withdraw this one?
Call the question, please.
Call the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 The motion passed, five-zero. May I have a motion to approve the agreement with Hospice of Marion County for grief support services? May I have a motion and a second?
Send it.
Moved by Ms. Crawford, second by Ms. Ely. Ms. Stacy, you withdrew, drew this item.
Call the question.
Call for question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion passed, five-zero. May I have a motion to approve the agreement with Youth Services International, Inc. for Marion Juvenile Correctional Facility? May I have a motion and a second?
Send it.
Second.
Second.
So, uh, moved by Ms. Ely, second by Ms. Borton. Ms. Stacy, you withdrew this item.
Question?
Call the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion to approve the independent contractor agreement with Agent, uh, Agent Speech Therapy thirteen, to provide speech therapy for the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year? May I have a motion and a second?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Crawford, second by Ms. Ely. Ms. Stacy, you withdrew this item.
Question?
Call the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. May I have a?
Would you like for me to vote for you?
I've got it now. Thank you.
The motion passes five zero. May I have a motion to remove from the table, the motion to approve the service agreement with Crown Consult, uh, Consulting, Consulting Group, Inc.? May I have a motion and a second?
Second.
It was moved by Mrs., uh, Stacy, and second by Mrs. Borton. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Superintendent? Okay. Okay, discussion, any discussion on it?
I do have a little discussion. Um, one question that I do have, and possibly it would be for procurement, and maybe Mrs. Bosinellis can help me with that. Um, I still remain a little bit confused on, as far as a reverse auction and that sort of thing. I'm a little bit concerned about, there's a couple of things still that concern me, but I think we can work through it all. But regarding procurement, is there not a way that you, all this time, we could have been doing best and final offer? Or do you have to have a middleman to do best and final offer? For example, if you, say, our, our contractors sent us a bid on windows, or whatever, doors, whatever we're doing. And we did a public opening and shared their ranking with them, and said, you can go back and in two days bring us back your best and final offer. That's basically what we're doing with the reverse bid. The reverse bid, they're, the bidders are seeing their ranking all day. And um, or two days, or three days, or however long you do it. But I'm just out of curiosity, um, is this something that we could have been doing on our own all this time?
Uh, well, the process that, that we would be using with Crown is an electronic process.
But I mean, could we have been doing this, like, we, they turn in our bids, and then their bids, and we say, okay, is that your best and final offer? You're ranked, these are the rankings of everybody on the thing, and then go back? Because the reason I'm saying this is, um, if we, I'm looking at the percentages, the three percent up to several million dollars, um, basically that could cost us thirty thousand to ninety thousand dollars, you know, to do, for our vendor to pay, um, the, the company that's doing the reverse auction. And that's a lot of money, and it's not like we're saving that money. The vendor is going to put that three percent on his bid, and possibly put overhead and profit on top of that also, if he was in the construction industry. The overhead and profit is put in on the final number. But um, you know, we do things the first, you know, our district is just so well-known for doing things first. Like, some years ago, we joined in on the, the grading, the teacher grading program or something that was supposed to be so wonderful, that was, ended up not being so wonderful. We're the second people in the nation to use that. Um, we are the first district in the state to pay teachers half pay, and we got in trouble for that. We seem to be trailblazers, that we send out the scout, and he just seems to come back with a bunch of arrows in his back, you know? And, and now we're using an organization that's brand new at doing this. Um, after, um, you know, questioning and speaking with them, I understand, all businesses start somewhere. And um, you know, it came to me that this was, company was very experienced, but when I quizzed them, I found out basically they'd done, you know, one for another district, two for another district, and two for another district. And I really like to get in on the ground floor of, get in on something where, like, seventy percent of the districts are doing these things, you know? To prove to us it really works. Um, and I don't have a problem, I trust you and Mrs. Bosinellis to, to keep the board apprised of, you know, what's happening. But what concerns me is that, another issue, I see in the bid documents, that um, they will also help us to, um, procure speci, bid specifications and that sort of thing, you know, he'll help address those. I'm a little bit concerned about the precedent we could be setting, where the person that's gonna financially gain from the bid opening, um, is also writing this, helping to write the specifications, and that concerns me. And if we go into this arrangement, um, I would like to share with you, which I'm gonna vote for this tonight, but what, um, these are my concerns. And if we go into this, I really don't want to start having someone from the outside writing our specifications.
Right, and.
I want to maintain control of that, because I think, when I look and I see, you know, I mean, some of his other areas that, you know, recommended the company, you know, Cook County, Illinois, and Chicago, wow, I really trust those people up there, you know? But um, I don't wanna, I don't wanna do business like Cook County and like Chicago, City of Chicago does. I wanna do business the way, I want to be kind to our vendors. I want, I do not want a, a young new company to make their start off the backs of the Marion County vendors. And so, um, I will be watching this so closely. And I don't want, you know, I don't want any even suggestion, that anyone could even suggest, that we haven't, we are allowing a company to, um, to bids, do bid specifications that limit bidders in certain ways. So, um, I guess we're going into this, I'm not real comfortable with it. I'm not comfortable being with another starting company. I hope we don't come out with arrows in our back, like we have several other times, when we've been the first in the world to do it, where we're trailblazers in the wrong direction. But um, but those are my concerns, and I'm gonna vote for it. But I wanted it on the record, my concerns, and so that as you do these bids, you remember Mrs. Stacy saying these things in the back of your little head, that, um, I really, and you know I will comment if I'm concerned, okay?
That would be fine, I just, I wanna reassure you that our department is still in control of the whole, the whole bid process, and if I see or feel that anything is, is going in that, you know, way, I, it'll stop dead in its tracks.
Because, you know, it's gonna, you know, basically, if they do a three million dollar bid for us, basically they get ninety thousand dollars. That's not free, that, we pay that. We pay that ninety thousand. Um, so, just remember that, on some of these big bids, that possibly we could do ourselves. And um, and I also would like for you to check into that, what I'm talking about, the best and final offer, to see if on some of the large bids, we could do something like that. Um, where we might have a three million dollar bid or something, and we, or do you have to have a middleman, like, um, a reverse auction company, you know, some, I don't know, I mean, it just seems to me like if the reverse auction can be, can do this, that we could have been doing this all along, by having our subcontractors, you know, our people come in and give us their bid, and we say, okay, you're ranked first, second, third, fourth, fifth, is this your best and final offer? And if they go, no, I can go back and work on, we don't give them the price, just like on the, on the reverse auction, the price is not coming up. But I would like for you to check into that and see if it's legal, I don't know. Or can you only do it with a middleman?
And that would be more along the lines of when you do an RFP and have negotiations with the vendors, where you could entertain the best and final.
You could entertain that? Okay, well, I mean, that's just a thought, that I'd like for you to consider best and final offer, um, to see if it's possible for us to also do that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Any discussion, Mr. Crawford?
Yeah, uh, at point of, uh, information, Mr. Chair, uh, what, there were two contracts that were included in our board packet, which one are we voting on?
The one that you pulled off the record is the original one. There is another one there that shared the revisions that they are recommending, that if some, if y'all are in agreement with revisions, then you can make an amendment to replace it. Both contracts were provided for your review a week in advance.
The first contract.
So what, we, so we pulled the first one, which has.
That, that needs, yes.
Okay, just.
Yeah, we're proving that.
You're proving the original one, it doesn't have the changes in there.
Nobody's made an amendment, but if you give it to.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford, you have to help me with these things.
You're gonna have to, what you're gonna have to do is you're gonna have to strike and replace.
Yes.
Okay. We'll, we'll go to the superintendent, and he will do that, and then we'll.
This experience is invaluable.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As a result of discussion at the February twenty-fifth, two thousand fourteen board meeting, the service agreement has been revised, and a copy provided to board members in the agenda packet.
Yes, but Mr. Superintendent.
Yes, sir.
What came off the table is, does, does have, has none of the changes in it. So if we vote for that, then we are voting for that original contract with none of those changes. You have to either defeat the contract, or s, or do a strike-all, and replace it with the revision. And I've heard no amendment to that affect.
It's coming, Mr. Chairman.
If you can let the chair make one additional statement at this time, I think it will clarify your questions, and if not, we'll work through this, Mr. James.
If an agreement with the changes have been, have, may I, uh, in the changes, may I have a motion to amend it, the replace, amend it, replace the original service agreement with the revised service agreement provided? Oh, let me re, uh, read that again. May I have a motion to amend it, amend, the replace the original service agreement with the revised service agreement provided? May I have a motion and a second on that?
Summit.
May I? It was moved by Mrs. Stacy, second by Mrs. Borton. Any discussion on that?
I have an, I have an amendment. Would you send that down, Ms. Flotketter, please?
Oops. Thank you.
Mr. Crawford, may you read it off?
All right, I just wanna make sure Ms. Flotketter had it. Uh, board, I, I move that we delete section seven of the Crown Consulting Group Service Agreement between Crown Consulting Group and the School Board of Marion County.
Okay, looking at that, uh, Mr. Collins, would you read that section for us, if you would?
Please, second, Mr. James.
I'll give you a second.
Second.
Uh, Mr. Crawford, are you speaking to the first agreement?
Uh, I'm, well, it's in both agreements, section seven, which is the indemnification, and we don't do that.
Correct, it is, it has been removed, um, in the, the new agreement.
Not the one that I've got in there, uh, the one was in my board packet, still has that in there, and it has a cute little line in there saying, well, basically, if it can't be enforced, if, if we won't.
That was in there.
That's not legal either.
Right, that was in the, the original agreement, and it has been removed. Uh, number seven in the second is the retainer and transaction fees.
Well, the one I have, which is a listing of four, eight, fourteen, it still has number seven, claim for damages. So you must have another agreement that I don't have.
Look, look online, yeah, at what's there. You, you may have printed it.
I printed this out of the board packet that you gave me last night.
Is that the old one?
So, no, that, it says right on there. Four, eight, fourteen.
Okay. I saw it also, and I was wondering why it was there, and I just figured I complained about everything.
It's still there.
Is it on, where is it?
The new one has five.
Number seven.
That's the old one. All right.
Oh, well, four, eight, fourteen, 'cause that's the whole, that's the date of the entire packet. Here's, if you look, and.
It's not.
It's, that one is not in this one, it's not in this section.
I think it's, okay. When the hard copy was printed, the second one was not available, but it is available online.
Okay.
In the packet is the revised one.
Okay, let me get, let me see it.
And if you look at the second one there, it does not have that statement in it.
The page.
So, let me see if I understand this, we could not find time to get it into the original, or the one for this board packet, it suddenly materialized, some between Monday and, and?
It is here, I apologize, I'm looking at a hard copy, you're, you're the only one that has that version, okay, I'm sorry. It is on page two, three, four, one of the hard copy, is the revised agreement. They both say four, eighteen on them, because that, that, that four, eighteen is the date of the packet itself, of all three thousand pages.
Why would you not tell me about this?
I'm, I'm sorry, I thought I had.
I actually thought I read the same thing, Mr. Crawford, because I pulled it up and looked at the same thing you looked at.
I apologize, I thought it was there.
Okay, what I have here is that amendment. Let me, let me grab it again. What I have is the amendment Mr. Crawford have is not in the original pack, not in the, they are not in the amended virgin, ver, uh, version.
And Ms. Morris, would you confirm that for me, please? That, that, the revised version, does not have that statement.
Seven is retainer and transaction fees.
And it is in the hard copy. If I did not print out the appropriate copy for you, I apologize.
I did the exact same thing Mr. Crawford did, and printed that out, and looked at it, um, because I saw the four, eight, I was just as confused, so I guess misery loves company, Mr. Crawford.
On the electronic copy that I'm looking at, Mr. Chairman, the, the two are on there, the one on the left-hand side is the older version, and the one on the right-hand side is the one that.
They just both have four, eight on them.
Well, in the title of the detachments, one says two, four, and one says three, twelve, and those were the versions that we had. The four, eight, at the bottom right is the date of the entire packet.
Okay.
And it's on every page.
I'm hearing Mr. Crawford has withdrawn, drawn his amendment. Okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Crawford. Okay, any more discussion on the revise?
We're gonna regret this. I just know we're gonna regret this.
Okay.
Just, just talk some more about it, Mr. Crawford.
Now, let's go ahead and vote, I think the majority of the board's gonna vote, we're gonna regret it.
Well, if there's some information, I'd like to know.
I, I just, it's just a gut feeling, and I think there's something else somewhere behind, uh, the push on, on this thing.
When it was presented to us at the work session, um, didn't they tell us we had, always had the option to get out?
Yes, ma'am.
We did not have to stay with it.
And if you'll recall, we also discussed this at length, we are going to pilot this, we're not changing our entire purchasing arrangement, we want to pilot this with one particular product that's coming up. And we'd like to see if it works.
What particular product is that?
Uh, copy machines and copy products, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And I guess another is.
We don't have a general contract now for copy machines?
Yes, it expires, I think, Rick, can you tell us when it expires? It expires sometime this summer?
Yes, it expires June thirtieth.
If you, if you, we would like to try this, we would like to pilot this. Should the board, for some reason, and I hope you do not reject this, but should you reject this, we do have time to go back, and that's why we brought it to you now, and do this, the, the customary, old-fashioned way, you'd so choose, we think, and we can always go back, if we don't like the reverse auction, we can still have time to go back and do the, the previously used bid process.
Ms. Stacy?
One more, um, another question I have, and I spoke to the gentleman at the, at the workshop about it, um, regarding if you did an, a reverse auction for us, and we did not like the results, that, you know, we were not bound to do anything, you know, beca, even if we went out and bid it ourselves, but yet it says termination and cancellation, either party made terminate or cancel this agreement by giving the other party a thirty-day written notice of said action. Um, I really would have liked, and, and I asked, and I asked someone, you know, is that covered, and I assumed I would see it, and maybe I do see it, and I'm missing it in the contract, is there any place that says we are not bound to the auction, and um, is there any place in here, I mean?
Any bid, any bid that comes before you, you have the option to approve or reject the bid, um, that's, that's y'all's decision.
Okay, but if we reject it, and we went back and we did our own bid, um, hard copy, or, you know, do it the, the regular way, um, and we ended up basically using the same person, then, is that something that Crown could come back and say, well, you ended up using our person after all, even after you went through this process? I don't see anything in here that basically says that's not the case, that, I mean, like, if you're a realtor, and a realtor shows you a house, and you don't get it, but you've signed a contract with multiple listing, and then you go show the house yourself or something else, and you still have to pay the realtor his listing fee, if you sell it to the person that the realtor showed it to? Is that the case with this? If we went back and?
No, ma'am, if, if y'all did not approve a bid that utilized the reverse auction process, it would be dead in the water, um, it would be like it didn't exist.
Can we have a clause saying that in here, added to it?
That's practice, is it not? That is, that is existing practice, all bids are brought to you for approval. That is, that is existing practice, all bids are brought to you for approval.
And if you denied, if you rejected the bid, it would, it would be as though it didn't exist.
Except if we went back and we bid it out ourselves, and we ended up basically coming to the same conclusion, could we?
With the same vendor, we would, we would not owe Crown a dime, I know.
Can we have that in, written in this contract, is there a problem with writing that in the contract?
Ms. Morris would have to, to interject on that, I, I.
I'd just have to read it and see.
It would, uh, it would be a moot, moot point, in my opinion, to, to add that, because ultimately, um, as we pointed out, purchasing is still in control of the whole process, um.
It might be a moot point for you, but I'm a board member that doesn't fancy the idea of not covering the anatomy of the taxpayers, and.
The, the purchasing department rejects bids, and Mr. Collins, correct me if I'm, we reject bids that you, you guys never know about? Is that accurate?
No, typically, if we, if we opened a bid, I would bring it before the board to have them reject it, yes, yes, sir.
Okay, Ms. Borton.
I just want to say, Mr. Um, um, Rick and Ms. Boston Ellis, I really want to thank you, you're the department, for trying to be proactive with, you know, finding ways to cost, to cut down costs, um, and I realize it's a new venture, we'll be going out on, in, and, um, and we have so much, the power in our hands to, to, you know, if we finally go in the way we don't want it to, we can, we can always deny, uh, something. I just want to thank you, and thank you for bringing the Crown representatives to talk to us, so that we could get a better understanding of what their company was all about, I sincerely appreciate that they have purchasing experience, and, um, it really is something, when we want to be proactive to help save money for our taxpayers, uh, and one of our departments comes up with a, a different idea, I think it's something that we should, you know, always try, especially when we're trying to save money to put money in the classroom for teachers, so, thank you.
I, I think we need to go with it, and, um, I, let, let's try it and see, and, and we can get out at any time. This is a wave of the future, you know, uh, this reverse auction sounds like a good way for Marion County to get ahead of the game, and we might be the, one of the few counties doing this right now, but I guarantee you, we're gonna see more counties doing it in the future.
Oh, Miss Stacy.
That's fine, um, I think it'll pass, I won't vote for it if we don't have that language to protect the taxpayers, that, um, we are not, I mean, it's, it's just something that would make me feel more comfortable, that, I mean, y'all have given me your word, Crown's commented at a workshop meeting, that's not on television, um, I don't know how good someone's word and a handshake is anymore in America. I wish it was the case, but, um, when I'm voting for something that affects many, many people, um, you know, you'll have your three votes, or four, but it won't be one of mine, because I, I just can't vote for something that I'm not totally, completely comfortable with, and if, there seems to be some, um, some resistance to put that in there, which I don't understand. If there's a strong resistance to put a clarifying clause in here, and that resistance is concerning me.
Yeah, Mr. Crawford, you have anything? Move the question.
I'll move the question, I just, um, before I call the question, I, I just wanted to share this, share my thoughts on this. The thing that I, I know that we workshop this, and I listened to the tape, and to, for us to not to take an opportunity to move forward with something, especially when someone is saying, let's pilot it, let's see what we can get out of it, would be a travesty to us, for us to do that. And for us as a board to have an opportunity to save some additional dollars, I think we need to always consider that. And at the, at this point, I call the question on this, uh, I call for the vote on the, on the motion as amended.
You've got to vote to, you've got to vote on the motion to amend first, to replace the document. I'm yet to vote on motion to amend replacing it.
I.
You've had a motion and second, there was never a vote.
To, uh, let's see, the motion to amend, to place on the original service agreement with the vote, with the revised service agreement provided. May I have a motion?
We've got it.
May I, I'm calling for the vote.
Correct.
All in favor.
To amend, to replace it.
Re- replacing it.
To approve the revised document.
The revised document. All in favor signify by saying aye. The motion passed four-one. I call for a vote on the motion as amended. I call for the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The vote, uh, passes three-two. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the following donations? One thousand dollars to community technical edu, adult education from Paul Wise, five thousand dollars to Dunellan Middle School from Fabulet, Fabuletics, mid, midterm camera valued at five thousand dollars to Forest High School from Douglas C. Hall, M.D., three thousand two hundred dollars to Fort McCourt School from Cactus Jacks Two Incorporated, two thousand five hundred dollars to Horizon Academy at Marion Oaks from the heart of Florida, one thousand dollars to Lakeberry High School from Joan T. Wright Trust, two thousand five hundred dollars to Liberty Middle School from their business partner, ACA Construction Group, LLC, via the Public Education Foundation, one thousand three hundred dollars to Vanguard High School from the Kiwanis Club of Ocala, four thousand dollars to Vanguard High School from the Knights of Ocala Basketball, two thousand three hundred and fifty-five dollars and seventy-three cents to Westport High School from the Culture Vultures of Stone Creek, two thousand five hundred dollars to Ward Highland Elementary School from their business partners, Lee's Famous Recipe Chicken, Stillwater Enterprise Incorporated via the Public Education Foundation, media books valued at four thousand dollars to the Westport School from Ms. Helen Condu. May I have a motion and a second?
Second.
It was motion by Mrs. Borton, and second by Mrs. Elie. All in favor, may, are there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion passed five-zero, and at this time, I would like, who was the last one, who was last? Ms. Elie, would you do, would you do the honor of thanking for us?
Yes, sir, um, we appreciate the support that all of our business people out there have for our schools. You know the needs of your, your school, wherever you are, and all of this money, it's close, it's around thirty thousand dollars, it will definitely come in handy, all, and I know those principals are saying, thank you, thank you, as well as the teachers. This goes into internal accounts, where the principals get to pick and choose where they put that money, and where it's most needed in their schools, so thank you very much, business people.
Thank you. Meeting and reminders, the next administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for Thursday, April seventeenth, two thousand fourteen, at nine a.m. The purpose of this work session is to review the investment summary, technology plan, three-years, uh, plan update, impact fee index calculations, long-range planning, contracted services, uh, through the D E S of Florida, hiring procedures for an in-house legal counsel, council. April seventeenth is no, is no school day, as a, as a weather makeup day is not needed. The district office will be working four-ten-day, four-ten-hour days, Monday to Thursday, as the entire school district will be closed on Friday. So would you govern yourselves accordingly in terms of our, our administrative briefs and briefings and our dates that we have? Okay, now, I would like to go to ask the board for their concerns. Ms. Elie.
Um, I have some comments, not concerns as much. First of all, I want to remind students and parents, next week is FCAT, Monday through Thursday. Boys and girls, your teachers have prepared you well, it's important that you go to school those days and, and take the tests with your classroom, rather than being absent and trying to do it in a makeup situation. Students never do as well when they're pulled out of class the following week, so do your best on the test, I know you will. Secondly, next, tomorrow night is the All County Elementary Honor Choral Event at Westport High. Um, I'm looking forward to going to that and speaking to our, um, honor choir, I think it's gonna be a great occasion to bring our, our music enthusiasts together. And last but not least, Candy Roy was in the paper today, um, she is a Vanguard High teacher, she won twenty thousand dollar science lab challenge. This was a, a grant that, um, that she put in, apparently was quite lengthy to get involved, but she ran against teachers from all over the United States and Canada for this grant. So that, um, is in, going into the I.B. Biology Program at Vanguard High, and, um, we're very proud of her. That's, that's a huge grant for one teacher, and she already has it earmarked for what she wants to do with it, so congratulations, and Candy, you did a good job. And Vanguard, you're lucky to have her, congratulations.
Ms. Borton.
Oh, well, I got, um, two comments here, first, I want to, um, say I was over at Howard Academy for the, the Children's Alliance, and, um, Deborah House and a lot of the agencies had a pinwheel for child abuse, and it was a pretty good event, well-attended, and I was really, really, really pleased with it, so, want to say hats off to, um, Howard Academy, um, over there for the good work and being involved with the community. Second, I went out to Dunellen for the Boys and Girls Clubs opening, and, um, it was such a huge event. I mean, you know, I stayed here late, but I ran out there to get to be there, just to speak on Mr. James' behalf, and, um, I, I was able to make it at the end, but I got there to, to congratulate them for that, and, um, that's good. And, um, tomorrow night at Westport, seven, seven o'clock, I'll, I'll be there for the, uh, music event, so.
Thank you. Mr. Crawford. And Stacy.
I'd like to talk a little bit about what's been in the paper, City of Ocala. I know we've talked about the City of Ocala, um, as a school board member, um, I think that it is time for us to all come to the table, um, it's time to, for attorneys to stop writing letters for us to present to the other side and start talking for ourselves. I believe this is a, a place where we need to give the taxpayers their biggest bang for their buck, and as far as if it's a waste of time, Mr. James, so it's a waste of time. For twenty years, I was an activist, I felt my time had no value if someone needed me to help them, and I still feel as a public servant, my time has no value compared to the, the needs of my constituents supersede my value and my opinion as far as my time goes. If I have to sit ten hours with the city council, I'll sit ten hours with them across the table. I have some things I would like to share, I have some ideas, but because, um, I'm told that, because, I can't go before the city council, because we are in litigation with them, so therefore, I feel my hands are tied. You know, at this point, maybe, Mrs. Morris, you might could suggest something I could do, I don't know what I could do, but it is absolutely time, we're taking a beating on this. We have gone to the taxpayers asking for, um, mileage increases while we are spending the dollars they're giving us on legal fees. This is, um, and if it's pride between the two parties, then, you know, King, good old King Solomon says wisely in Proverbs, pride comes before a fall, I think we are seeing the fall now. We are being taken to the cleaners for acting like children, and, um, I just, you know, I feel like if we could talk with one another, I don't believe they have to have any, um, they don't have to give us something to talk to us. I believe we could just make a meeting, Mr. James, and just have a meeting, um, and if, and if a board member feels it's a waste of their time, they don't have to come. But it could be a public meeting that, um, whoever wants to come could come to it. But I feel that if we had a meeting across the table from one another, we could resolve this. And I have some ideas I would like to share, I can't share my ideas until we have a meeting. And so I'm asking you, Mr. James, to please reconsider and allow us to have a meeting.
Okay. Ms. Morris, you have anything you want to share?
Well, I think at this point, the school board is simply waiting for the city to respond and, um, send us some sort of proposal, and then you sit down in mediation with a mediator to guide the discussion, so that it's just not a discussion that is off track and isn't accomplishing anything, so.
But I have a proposal.
I'm, I'm gonna get into this in a minute, so I just want your comments, that's what I'm looking for.
Okay, Mr. James, I would like to respond, I, I have a proposal, and I can't get my proposal, because I can't talk.
It's her turn, then, we're coming down the line.
Well, you didn't come back to me.
Well, it's not your turn, you had your turn.
Except, I'm gonna, when someone says something, I'm gonna comment back.
Thank, thank you, Mr. James, a couple of comments here, I want to share with you, you know, we're all the time looking for ways that our students can become meaningful citizens and contribute to our community, and most of our high schools participate in, in blood drives. And I, just to share with you, they've received a memorandum from OneBlood, which is formerly the Marion County Blood Bank, and, and our five high schools that have participated in this have collected, just in the, in the fall, from August through December, six hundred and thirty-five units of blood, and I think that's an absolutely fantastic tribute to, to those kids and for the, for the students that are at those schools, and for the adults that help coordinate those particular programs. Secondly, uh, our graduation dates have been set for all of our high schools, uh, board members, I would like for you, if you could, at your convenience, to contact Ann Chulley and tell her which of those, uh, board, excuse me, which of those graduation dates you'll be able to attend. And then also, at this time of the year, we do this every year, there are so many activities that are going on at a variety of schools, that, from graduations to awards assemblies, Paula is in the process of collecting those and compiling that list for you. She'll have that ready for you at the end of April, the first week of May, so you can put those on the calendar, and I would encourage you to go to as many of those as you possibly can. And the last thing I want to say, I would like to address a comment that Mrs. Stacy made earlier about, about the agenda, and about that we're preparing the agenda, and you would hope that the agenda would be prepared in accordance with law and, and be appropriate. I, I do want to show you that, that the, the board agenda takes weeks to prepare, it's not something that is thrown together overnight. There are literally thousands of entries that are made to that, people propose things, they're approved by supervisors, they're sent back for revision, they have to follow timelines, uh, there are corrections, there are typographical errors that are there made. Like, this agenda alone was around three thousand pages long, um, it's reviewed by upper management, it's reviewed by the board chair prior to being published, and, uh, then it is published for the public and also for your review, uh, it, it's a big deal. And, and that's why many times I don't have many things to say here before this board, because the work has already been done to prepare you. And if you do, please, if you do have issues with individual items or the whole agenda as it's presented, please give us a timely notice with the particular issues that you have, and we'll be happy to address those. You know that this administration and previous administrations, if we find something that is inappropriate, we'll pull that agenda item, and we won't place it before you, but we think that the agenda items that we placed before you are appropriate, and they have been vetted, thoroughly vetted, and again, I, if you do find something is an error, we would like you to, to, to point that out to us. Thank you, sir, that's all I have.
Thank you. First of all, I just would like to thank Mrs. Borton, um, Mrs. Borton for filling in for me and doing an outstanding job. And I just want to commend the board for their patience with the, with young people over in, uh, the people in Dunellen, and having an opportunity to put in the first-class facility for young people. And when I say that, it was a first-class facility, and it was a community involvement, and as, as a board, and as your chair and vice chair, and all of us on this end of the county that took, that took some, uh, special pains to make sure this thing happened, it was a job well done. And I'm, I'm so proud of the fact that those kids have a place to go. And I will tell you this, a city does not, that does not take their, take care of their kids is not really, really a city. I will be sending you some information from the National School Boards Association. I will be sending you some information from the National School Boards Association in reference to resolutions and positions on various things throughout the country. I did have an opportunity to speak nationally and talk in terms of common core and high standards, and you, uh, and, uh, hopefully, we will get some revisions to see where the National School Board will be in reference to coming up with, uh, a stance on the thing we call common core, because there, it's, it, we did some revisions on it, and hopefully, you all, all of us can agree with what we're saying. All of us will agree that we need to, uh, raise or have higher standards. And the rest of that thing, we have found that we had other states that would move in the same direction as Florida was in terms of their, uh, their own, they're, they're writing their own, uh, high standards. So, I, uh, that will be coming as we, as we speak. I would like to make a, a general statement on, on lawsuit, uh, issue and dealing with the city. And I would like for us as a board to understand these things. We cannot continue to react to everything that we see in the paper. And I would like for, for you, uh, you to all understand, I respond to something, and hopefully, we will get some type of response. But at this point, I would prefer us not dealing, uh, going tit-for-tat what's in the paper, because that's not a good way to do business. Okay, when we get a response from the city, I will call and have an administrative briefing and work session so all of us can go over the response together. I do not want us, as a group, out there shooting from the hip or whatever, because I think we have some good dialogue going. But all this stuff that we see in the paper is just one side, this side, what's happening behind the scene. And I'm encouraging you to let's follow our advice of our council and everybody else, and when we get a formal response, then we will have a briefing. I will call and a briefing administrative, and a session that we can go over these things and talk about what we have on the table. This is the direction I, I would like for this board to go. I'm sure John McLeod and those people will be corresponding with me real soon. I had one of the reporters call me, and she was ahead of the bullet. Because I, just like I said, her, I have not received anything at this point, but I'm sure it's on the way. And this is how I think we, we should approach this. And that is, this is where we are. We should speak in one voice after we've met in a, a briefing and work session and discussed this, and then we can decide what we want to do at this particular point. This is what I have with it, and I don't want to seem rude, but you know, and I know, the paper one day is on this side, and the next day is on that side, so we don't know. So, let's, let's just wait for some reaction, and let's meet as a group. That's where I am.
Do you have a copy of what you sent to them for us? A copy of what you sent to the city?
I can get it for you. I don't have it with me, but I can get it for you. It was in, it was in, uh...
Is it in my box or anything?
Nope, it was in the, the paper in terms of the article I responded to, what they wrote in there.
But I, didn't you send something back to them, though? No. You haven't sent anything back to them again?
It's their turn. They'll respond to me. I've talked to John. Okay. Before addressing the matter, I wish to acknowledge that board members have received the alternative placement list for students through March fourteenth, two thousand fourteen. And are there any parents in the audience who wish to speak on behalf of a student regarding a disciplinary matter? May I have a motion to, may I have a motion to approve, uh, approve the expulsion of student J D fourteen dash six one, J D fourteen dash six two, J D fourteen dash six three, J D fourteen dash six four, J D fourteen dash six five, J D fourteen dash six six, J D fourteen dash six seven E, J D fourteen dash six eight E, J D fourteen dash six nine E, J D fourteen dash seven zero, J D fourteen dash seven one, J D fourteen dash seven six E, and J D fourteen dash seven seven E with educational service through, uh, through the first semester of two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year. May I have a motion and a second?
Second.
It was moved by Mr. Crawford, and second by Miss, uh, Ms. Ely. Are there any discussion? Saying none, I call a question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 May I have a motion to approve the... Who's that?
Mine, it's all mine, yes.
Ms. Bornton.
Yes, it was.
Sit, vote for her.
Please.
May I have a motion to explu- approve the expulsion of students J D fourteen dash seven two, J D fourteen dash seven three, J D fourteen dash seven four, J D fourteen dash seven five, J D fourteen dash seven eight E, J D fourteen dash seven nine, J D fourteen dash eight zero, J D fourteen dash eight one, J D fourteen dash eight three, J D fourteen dash eight four, and J D fourteen dash eight six with educational services through the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
It was moved by Mrs. Ely. Need a second?
Second.
And second by Ms., Ms. Bornton. Are there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion passed five zero. There being no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
It moved by Ms. Ely. Now, I got a second. Second by Mr. Crawford. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned. Thank you.